All right, welcome everybody to the work session for the Library District Morning Trustees. I want to do roll call for this.
Certainly. Trustee Zucker.
Here.
Trustee Harden.
Here.
Trustee Gartner.
Here.
Trustee Giordano. Trustee Collier.
Here.
Trustee Seeds.
Here.
Trustee Hankey.
Here.
Trustee Montternock. And Trustee Hazelwood.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
All right, first item is on the upcoming 2027 budget.
All right. We'll do a quick presentation on that and then we'll just roll right into the second item for you. That's okay, it's all in one slide pack. Perfect. All right. So looking ahead, it seems like we just finished the fiscal year 2026 budget. Said we had made a round work on the 27 budget because it does play into consideration when we look at our employee health insurance and that. So if you look at our revenue estimate, it's real property tax levy, it's a non reassessment year. Personal tax levy is personal property tax, another piece of our revenue. We also get state aid and other assistance. We get some grants. We have investments on funds. And we have some charges for services such as passports. And that's kind of makes up our basket of revenues. Of course, as we all know, the biggest piece of that basket is that real property tax levy. And then the personal property tax levy. Oh, and then donations, sorry. Intergovernmental.
Got some more, got some more there?
Let's see, there's another one. He says intergovernmental, but you see part of that is, of course, some traditional, but we also have, unlike our chapter 100s, that we get a payment and we taxes. It's looking better and better if I keep on clicking, I'll find some more revenues. It's been a long day. At the last minute, we assume about a four and a half percent increase on all of those categories of revenue. That'd bring us up to 27 million, 497, 479, 100 dollars. We look at our expense estimate, assuming that we'll have about 3% increase in salaries. As you heard last time, we were looking at opportunities to reduce our total FTE count. But we are planning to see if we are able to offer our employees a raise. We're figuring that in this preliminary estimate budget. Benefits, we estimated for this about a 15% increase cost to the library district for our employee health benefits. Materials budget, so our books and collections, we're assuming flat at this time. Operation costs, you know, that's the base, keeping the lights on literally, a 3% increase in that. Technology and telecommunications, about a 3% increase on those line items. Capital, we're assuming that a flat for this initial round of items. So if we looked at in total, looking at the total revenues, taking that increase of our salary and benefits, materials, operating, technology, telecommunications, the general fund expense would be 25 million, 766, 400 dollars. Capital budgets being flat would be 1,2575, 1,257,500 per total of 20, 27 million, 23,900 dollars. Giving us about 455,000 in contingency at this point. Now, these are very early estimates. So that 450 is really a little lag. Kind of wild guess on some of these other items. If you look at the salary benefits, materials and operating, kind of giving us where do we normally fall in that range? As you will recall that salary and benefits around 65 traditionally is where we like to be. So we're a little bit hot, heavy on that. Materials is anywhere from that 15 to 19%. So we're a little bit lower on our material side than what we have been in some years past. And then the operations and technology and telecoms, really about where they've traditionally been. So not too far off based upon this very early in piece of looking at that. But not a lot of play. 450,000 in early analysis doesn't give us a whole lot of flexibility if revenues don't come in at that four and a half percent.
Can I just say that I wouldn't, I wouldn't lean too heavily on the percentages of the overall whole? Because your salaries and benefits are a large piece of that. A 3% increase in that is automatically going to lower everything else significantly. So I would almost focus on the dollars, not the percentage.
And I, I agree. We want, the only piece I want to be careful on is on the materials because that is part of the Missouri Public Library standards.
Right.
In order to stay in that category of it was 15 to 19%. So that's why I did carry those through the insurance that, yeah, we're still staying in that, that level that we, we kind of always been. Yeah, I just don't want to drop that below 15. So that we still can stay in that area.
Okay.
So what I like about this is it shows that, you know, if I go back to this piece, that, you know, our preliminary estimate is that we do have some funding, that we have the ability to offer employees a raise. We're not talking about closing branches. We're not making, talking about any real significant changes in operation. To be able to continue to fund the library and provide the quality of services that we're currently at.
How do you arrive at your assumption of a four and a half percent increase?
Julie, I'm gonna defer that a little bit to you because you and I kind of played, went back and forth on that number. And kind of both kind of landed at four and a half percent at this early stage.
I was just looking at the historic non reassessment years and projecting off of that. So it is, it's a rough estimate, but it's in line with what you would expect. But that's absent anything that's going on in our economic realm and legislative. Sits alone, just the historic data.
Any other thoughts or questions on kind of, kind of high level budget?
So let's pretend that, that we don't get four and a half on our revenue. Do you, I, I may be jumping ahead here, do you have thoughts of what is affected?
Well, we still have, if we don't get four and a half, we have a little bit contingency. We have, you know, 450,000.
Yeah.
So that does give us a little bit cushion.
Right.
Um, but if it's a significant piece, I mean, obviously capital is something that would make a lot of sense to be able to look at. Can we reduce that from a million two to a million one or a million based upon how close we're? I still don't see anything that, even if we're way off on the four and a half percent, that would immediately preclude us from any, you know, changing our operations or any significant impact to staff or anything at this point.
Okay.
Overall, I feel pretty comfortable with the, where we stand as an organization. And I think it kind of reinforces that, you know, we have the funding for the day to day operations that continue the great service that we do. It's when we're asked to do more that we have to be very careful on what we say yes to and what we say no to. We are trying to create a culture within the organization that when we have opportunities to say yes to the community, that we step up and we help provide those services. And an example of that is with this, the Radiation Exposure Compensation Act. And that was a new effort that our teams took up in hosting town halls and helping folks find that data so that they can submit their applications and hopefully get some funds through the RICA Act. So that's an opportunity that, yes, we took on additional duties. It's taking additional stamp time, it's taking it, you know, additional resources. But it really fits core in our mission of connecting people over resources. So we want to say yes to those opportunities if we can, but there's, you know, there are limitations. And so we're being careful and strategic in that. But at this particular time, I feel like, you know, we are a much better situation than where we were a year ago. We are able to manage our costs and hopefully continue to stay on track. Employee health insurance, ready to move on to that?
Sure. Sorry, are you may have any questions on the first part?
All right, so kind of a high level renewal overview. And Julie and Tiffany, if you want to join in, you have things that I'm forgetting. As I've been in interviews all day, so my, my brain is about fried at this particular point. But, uh, so definitely join in because this is an important topic. I want to make sure that we, we provide the attention that needs. So this is a high level of our employee benefit package. We obviously have medical and pharmacy. That's what we're saying, that's our current vendor. Our renewal expires at the end of this calendar year, so we need to renew January 1st. We received an estimate, Julie working through.
Heffernan.
Reached out to Cigna on what it would be to just renew based upon our current plan and what would be the increase in premiums. The bid that we got back was initially higher than 45%. And after negotiation, they came down to a 45% increase. Dental, we have Lloyd, or Allied, they are also up for renewal. We are self insured for our dental, so we have, they just do claim processing and administration for us. The bid that we came back was 3.1% increase for that. And the total cost of that contract is, you know, a little over $5,000. Because they're just doing the claim processing and, and that piece of it. Vision's not due until 2027, nor is our liability and disability, which is mutual loan law, which is in 2027. So we have a, I don't know if it was next year, but the most, much smaller than our medical and pharmacy. So when we got the 45% increase, after trying to renew, renegotiate that, working through our insurance broker, we decided that we had to go out to a broader bid and solicit opportunities. So we partnered with insurance broker, they solicited proposals from Medica, United Healthcare, Aetna, Anthem, BCBS, and Gravy. Medica submitted the most competitive proposal and distinguished themselves by offering additional plans and networks. Specifically, they offered us two different deductible options. A $2,000 deductible, which is what we currently have, which is now, and then also a $2,500 deductible option. And then they provided us three networks, a nationwide plan, which is what we have with Cigna, it's a nationwide plan. And then they provided a Mercy network and a WOSS calling and SSM network, but SSM piece does include some partners. These three options provide employees great flexibility and choices in their healthcare coverage. And so that's why we're recommending proceeding with Medica.
John.
Yes.
Is Medica new to the St. Louis market?
Yes.
Yeah, they are.
I, I checked them out too.
Is that why that play into their bid?
I'm sure it did.
And so, so when we come up for renewal of them, let's go around. They may not be price effective, so to speak.
I think there's always that risk, but I, the history that we've had when talking to the broker about Medica is that they do have a large presence, presence in the kind of northern Midwest.
Yeah, they're out of Minnesota.
Yeah, out of Minnesota. And they have a good, a good rep.
They do.
They have a good track record. Coffee's running out really quick, I have this morning. So they, we, and they offer competitive coverage. And that's the thing is I, it seems like they're providing employees a lot of options to be able to make informed decisions on their healthcare.
I saw their first ad on TV, like with the.
Just recently.
Just the last two or three days.
They're reaching out into the St. Louis market extensively. And they have that partnership with SSM, obviously, which is a strong, you know, Midwest, St. Louis provider. This kind of gives you an idea of the slide of the, the estimates that came back and the percent increase. Cigna was a 45% increase to the library. Gravy, Garvey was a 33.4, Anthem was a 50% increase. And then Medica would have this range and it really gets into the deductible amount and the network choice that our employees would choose.
So they get to pick from those options you're not limiting that down to what they can choose?
Correct, so we were, the proposal that, how we're presenting this is that they essentially, the employees would have six options that they could choose.
Right.
So that's why the actual cost, if everyone went with the $2,000 deductible nationwide plan, our premium would be that 1,939,860.
Right.
So about 20%.
Right.
For the budget estimate of fiscal year 27, you'll remember that I estimated about a 15% increase. So I assume that some people might go with that option.
Sure.
So that we see some savings there. But there is that possibility that we wouldn't rate, you know, that, that contingency of 455,000. Or that could be gone if more people choose that, that option versus going to a different option.
Right, so their premium would be, would be affected based on their choices.
Correct, and we have, we'll get into.
So how many employees are eligible for?
We have 80 employees that are eligible for. All right, so Medica, the other thing that's interesting about Medica is that it is a nonprofit. So like United Health and some of these others are full profit companies. They add, it's one of the pieces, they call it, that they are a nonprofit health, health insurance company headquartered in Minnesota that serves communities in the upper Midwest and other states. It offers a variety of plans, including commercial, employee based coverage, individual and family plans, Medicare, Medicaid. Medica's key features include nonprofit status, which I've said, focus on community and affordability and partnership with local healthcare systems. And we'll get into that piece next. So they talk about the Mercy Network, which is, obviously Mercy is a big name in the St. Louis region. You have the SSM, which includes St. Luke Doctors, SS Health, and SluCare. And then you could choose the Nationwide Plan, which is obviously is, is all of the above, including Yeshua Doctors and BJC. We did inquire whether they had a, another network option that was like BJC doctors. Like, so you have Mercy, SSM, and BJC. They do not have that relationship with BJC as a network only provider. So if you want to use, if you have BJC doctors or Yeshua doctors, you would choose the Nationwide Plan. And then you have to choose whether you want the 25 deductible, 2,500, or the 2,000. So if you look at the healthcare providers in the region, it's pretty well covered. Getting into the premium and cost, the Nationwide PPO 2,000 deductible is that higher number of 1,900. If you look at the 2,500, the cost to the library is the 1,830. Then you can get into the various, the Mercy one, Mercy 2,500, SSM 2,000, 2,500. And you can see how that deductible kind of plays down as, as you go. And so what we put together then here would be splitting that cost between, obviously the premium cost is shared between the library and employees. Regardless of which option our employees would choose, the library picks up the lion's share of the cost. And I think it's over 74% and then up to 91% of the cost of that premium. And so if you look at just comparable to what we have today with Cigna is the Cigna Nationwide Plan, $2,000 deductible. If we switch to Medica, the increase to the library is shown here would be that 15.1%. The increase to the employees, which is the column one, two, three, four, five, six over employee percent premium. That's percent premium, the increase in employees is far less counted. They would see a 50% increase under this option. So their current employee contribution, if it's, say for employee only, is, I believe, $94. And so it would increase up to that 142 employee only, which is our biggest group of people we have. We have the column you see on the side that says enrollment. We have 54 employees that are employee only. We got six that are employee plus spouse, seven employee plus kid, families 13. So that employee only is our biggest piece of our population that has library provided insurance. And so their premium per month would be 40, $142.28. Our contribution would be that 1,222.65. So again, we are picking up 90% of that premium cost on a monthly basis. Employees would be only picking up 10% of it. But if you look at the percent increase in employees, it's $47 a month more, which is 50%. So it's a big increase to them, dollar wise, a little bit, not as big. For us, it's, it's a big increase, however we look at it. So that would be option one.
Would you guys run a comparison of what, what the data would be if it were Cigna being renewed?
The exact same scenario, yes. Do I? Do we have that number here?
So I'm just saying, when you tell employees that there's a 50% increase
What it would have been if it was Cigna.
in their premium, but the good news is it's not the 80% increase or whatever it would have been under Cigna. So that would be handy to have that data.
We do have that, I have it on the computer there on the spreadsheet that I put together. I did not have it, I was thinking if I had it later on this slide, I do not have it on this slide. If you go to the 2,500 Nationwide Plan, it's a 10% increase to our employees per month. And we kept that, we have flexibility on this. I want to go back. So at the administration level, how much increase to pass on to our employees, what is a decision that we have? So we're trying to create a scenario that seems to make sense. The first one was we pass 50% on to the staff, staff on, on this particular plan because of the increase to the library. And we kept that percent increase the same across all categories. So whether I was an employee only or family, I was always going to see that 50% increase. That doesn't need to be that way. We could adjust that, but that seems to be the logic that makes the most sense as an employee. My health cost isn't increasing, it's increasing 50% whether I'm an employee or I'm employee plus family. You know, so you could add be 50% if you're employee only and 10% employee plus family. That then seemed to make sense from a equity standpoint. But the dollar amounts, you know, change obviously, so that, well, one way you say, well, I want to keep the dollar increase all the same. Well, that doesn't necessarily make sense. So the logic that we chose, and the board, if you have a different opinion on this, we can run the numbers differently, was that we keep the percent increase the same. So in this case, we ran it all 50%. The next scenario, we kept the increase to employees as a 10% increase. The difference here is that they now are paying for a 2,500% deductible. So the increase went from nine dollars more a month from $95 to 104 for the employee only. So this, this one is fairly comparable and seems to be a reasonable increase for most employees that would be looking at this option. The only real difference in the plan coverage is the deductible amount. We ran the math and I can't determine whether someone is choosing between these two. You have to be able to, is your deductible increase in deductible, the difference in deductible, less than 5,000. You know, so if you knew you're going to exceed the 20, 2,000 deductible, how much more do I have to pay a month to get that extra, you know, coverage? The numbers work out. You know, if you think you're going to be spending $2,500 in insurance costs, you're better off to go off and pay for this. The next option was looking at keeping everything the same. So if you chose that you're going to choose one of the networks, whether it be Mercy or SSM, and you as an employee have minimal healthcare costs currently, and you really don't want to see a change to your paycheck, you could choose one of the Medica Mercy or the Medica SSM network. And there would be no change, there'd be no increase to your, your premium costs. And the cost to the library is, you know, it's 2% less, but it's essentially the same. So we're trying to keep that option right in the middle that is cost neutral to the library as well as cost neutral to our employees. The, so Mercy Network, this is SSM at the 2,000. Once again, cost neutral to both the district as well as our employees. The next options, we just kind of went the opposite side. The other one, we got a 10% increase. If they choose the $2,500 deductible, choosing your network, they would see that a 10% decrease in their premium. So on that employee only example, we've been hitting, their current deductible is around $95. It would go down to at least $85.37. So once again, we're sharing that cost savings with our employees. They would be seeing a 10%, we'd be seeing a 7% decrease. And so that's kind of the logic that was used to put these, these numbers together. And then the, kind of closing statement that we've been putting out is that, you know, we are committed to supporting our healthcare, helping employees while offering several insurance coverage options. And I think that's hopefully our key message is that, you know, this gives us basically as employees, six different plans that they can choose from. Based on the doctors that they have within, you know, healthcare, the coverage, and basically their, their health conditions. And they didn't have a choice of how much they would like to see taken out of their check to help cover that cost. Versus now they don't have that. So, you know, we have one plan, we have a Nationwide Cigna plan, and this is now six options that they could choose from. These plans give our employees flexibility to choose their level of coverage, cost that fits their lifestyle, healthcare needs and budget. And then again, no matter whatever choice is chosen, we at the district are picking up the lion's share of the cost. Anywhere from 74% up to 92% of the cost based upon that, providing that affordability to our team members. Any questions on that?
74, 92%.
Historically, we've always had a large share. And as increases in the past have come forth, we have absorbed a lot of those to the point. Julie had used the term at one point, we kind of shielded our employees from those increases, especially when, when they weren't getting, we're running on pay. And so we didn't change those. I know that, that is something we could have done and said, okay, we're going to take everything instead of that range of 74 to 91% and said we're going to be 80/20.
So that's not because there's different classes of employees, it's just the historical, okay?
So we kept that cost share amount the same and decided to just look at percent increase. We did run the scenario looking at what if we took every employee to 80/20? What if we took everybody to 85/15? What if we took everybody to 90/10? And ran through those numbers. What ends up happening is that the family coverage really got some large increases. Much, and the percent increase, when you try to explain them such a change to, from going from one provider to another, got all over the place. So you had maybe the employee only seeing a very small increase or 10% increase because we went to kind of a standard. And you had others that were seeing really significant increases. And decided it was best to stay with a standard increase, although we there's different ways. I like, I'm looking at this example here, you know, the, we're covering 92% of the employee costs and only 80% of any of the other coverage costs in this area. Different, you know, there kind of a number, could we play with it, we could, we could have changed it. It just was one more complication, it's made it seem, it seemed better to keep everybody's increase the same versus playing with the percent coverage. There's like, you know, this here was ten and ten and twenty-six percent. I think there is some logic of always having a higher coverage on the employee. And I'm sure if I agree with all of the math, I of how that plays out, but it was just more change than what. I could. The message just got really confusing trying to make too ch- too many changes with the the cost share.
Sure.
John, um that go go back if you would, that column enrollment is at eighty. Am I underst- now we've got, I may be off a little bit here, but we've got a hundred and eighty-five full-time equivalents. So these are eighty of those hundred and eighty-five. And if we suddenly became immensely attractive for whatever reason, is there a chance that we would have? A lot more than eighty eventually coming into play and that that would create any benefits of any sort?
We are primarily um supported by part-time staff that do not have healthcare coverage. Through the library district, so that we have eighty full-time employees that are qualified for healthcare coverage.
Well, that helps me understand why that's difference.
Do you have a policy on people who have coverage through their spouse? Whether they're offered coverage, did they take coverage through their spouse's insurance or?
That was something that I had thought about, but it's again, was another change, I didn't know if we wanted to interject in the conversation.
No, my my thought personally is that I would love to see as small of an increase to the employee as possible. Really, it's only this two thousand nationwide nationwide plan that sees a large increase. Everything else is zero or negative, great.
Or ten percent is the one that's, there's a nationwide plan that would take it up the deductible to twenty-five hundred. And that twenty-five hundred dollar deductible, when, so I did do a quick walk in around up here, so it's not that unreasonable. I can't remember what the county, do you know what our, the deductibles of county, our family plan? Yeah, I didn't reach out to them, I reached out to O'Fallon and a few others and it was, it was competitive. And so this one keeps the increase to the district at fourteen percent and the employee ten percent, which I think is. A very comparable increase, a reasonable increase and.
Like better than a forty-five percent.
And also good those that are. Particularly those that are. That don't have significant health issues, that may only see their primary care. Right, yeah, the option to choose that. And actually see a slight increase if they wanted to.
And really, you're you're only, I mean, I don't know the specific situation of all eighty individuals. But I, from what I gather, if you're a B J- B J C doctor right now, you are the only, that's the only reason to select the nationwide plan, really. Most people either have a Mercy or SSM, you know, plan and either have SSM doctors or Mercy doctors. But you can select that plan, which would see a cost savings for you in some scenarios. If you have B J C, that's where things get tough.
Yep. Or Whiskey Doctors.
Yeah.
For the two.
Yeah.
Networks that we have, then if you either have, you know, some good, good doctors that would have you required to go to the H Y plan to deal with that.
So you won't know the overall cost until everybody selects a plan?
Correct.
And you've done no, well, yeah, we haven't approved it, so you can't really do a what-if scenario, okay?
We know that the the maximum is, you know, we know the range.
Yeah, yeah.
And we budgeted, kind of the the primary budget numbers based upon the worst-case scenario. And every, you know, if there's any savings beyond that, then that gives us more flexibility based upon our revenue estimates. Open enrollment, if this gets approved tonight, would be, would start.
The last week of November, Thanksgiving week.
And being a plan change or a provider change, it takes quite a bit coordination between our finance and H R. To get that all within our payroll system. And 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 ready by January first, so, so this item is a critical that we. Give direction, that we are on the right path, and when we get approved tonight, that's great, we'll we'll be at least working on it. If there's further analysis, we would need to do that quickly and then especially in back of the board so that we can. We can get everyone enrolled and that there's no gaps in coverage.
What would the effect be if you don't let them choose the national plan?
It's about three hundred thousand dollars.
If you want to pull in that work?
Yeah, two hundred thousand.
Providing coverage.
So I I can just tell you though that, like, I mean, if you have a doctor that you, I mean.
Happens all the time when they're in and coming in and out of the networks.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, you know, two to three hundred thousand.
May complicate things if we've got someone who's undergoing treatment or has a complicated medical condition that has to assist the doctor. So again, transitioning that short period of time.
It would definitely affect the workplace morale, is what I would say, we're trying everything we can to improve it, so.
Yeah, if you've got B J C. And the employer cuts you off from from that provider, that's a.
Right.
At least I give you the option, in this case, you have the choice option, like, in my particular case, I have, you know, I got young kids are. Ugly healthy, so they they don't see the doctor often, my kind are relatively healthy. We go to that, but my kids see a Mercy doctor, my wife is in SSM and I see Whiskey Doctors. No particular reason, those are just the doctors over time that we picked and we like them. I'm gonna pay, I'm gonna pay the the difference for the national plan because I don't wanna go through the inconvenience of changing my doctors and my wife won't wanna change hers. And we're gonna just, but I'm fortunate I can, I get forward that. Others that, you know, may wanna see a difference, you know, at least we're probably now, so I think that's. So what I like about this scenario is that it's, it does provide that options and flexibility to the staff. I think to greater, greater extent than what um I thought we were gonna get at some point during this process. Even in our early conversations with Medica, um there was a lot of conversations about. Would they let us to do the two thousand and twenty-five hundred plans, both for nationwide and um the individual networks? Cause we are relatively small, I mean, United Healthcare declined a bit because we are eighty people.
Aetna doesn't, Aet- excuse me, Aetna declined as well, Aetna and United Healthcare declined.
And so because of our size, we had folks that were declining and and be able to have a plan that was gonna then allow us to take that eighty. And start upgrading it into smaller pieces, you know, cause. You've got six options, you're now, we're taking that eighty, you're sub breaking it up into potentially smaller groups, so it's, our impact to their overall mission. Their their system is relatively small, uh so having this many options, I was surprised that we got to what we did. We also had some concerns about um subtle differences like the E R benefit that we currently have with Cigna did. They had kind of, their plans had a variation, uh so we went back to them through the broker and then they made, they agreed to. Our current kind of E R structure that we have with our employees, so they, the building, the building, they kind of um worked with us on a few items. Although somewhat minor, at least was said, was a good, a good feel that they're willing to work to get our business.
All right, any other questions? All right, we will go ahead and end the work session, thank you, John, and staff for that presentation. We will start with the um regular meeting, let's, we'll have the roll call stand, um let's go ahead and start with the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with public comment, we have. First, we have Arnie Dinoff on items, I guess, related to the agenda, yes, sorry.
Good evening, members of the board of trustees, my name is R D C A C Dinoff, district attorney, public advocate. First issue I'd like to talk about is tax abatement, um there's a lot of issues, I know it's very controversial. I don't like giving away money to uh hundreds of millions of dollars uh to corporations. Clement Corporation um has a lot of assets that they own, uh they're opening up a lot of dealerships, both uh. New and used car dealerships throughout our county and the region. You know, they own a gold mine in Tanzania in South Africa and they own a lot of uh big corporations. So for the city of St. Charles to give them a fifty percent tax, uh uh property tax and equipment abatement, it's just highly ridiculous. Especially when they're gonna hire eight to thirty possible employees for a parts center, which is gonna be a conduit. To run through parts for their used car dealership service centers and their new car dealerships uh doing service. Uh it's over ten years, they're asking for a sales tax abatement and their most importantly, I guess. Uh they're getting a huge reduction in interest rates using industrial revenue bonds. Where the city of St. Charles actually owns the property and the building and leases back to Clement uh parts center. Uh the city of St. Peters has M R uh H two Mexico LLC, uh letter dated October second, there's a public hearing. They're asking for zero real estate, zero personal property tax abatement or zero uh exemptions. Uh use of, uh they're trying to get reduced interest rates through industrial revenue bonds. City of St. Charles will be owning the real estate and building leasing back uh in a loan amount of thirty-four million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar loan bond. Amount, um they're asking for one point seven million dollars in sales tax exemptions on materials and supplies, there's no effect. The next thing on the agenda is an agreement uh between the library district and the city of St. Charles, intergovernmental master agreement. And I have some issues with this because there's a lot of non-disclosure. What are the programs and offerings, there's no disclosure, there's no staff memo, it's just a generic agreement between the two entities. What is the commitment on behalf of the library district, there's no disclosure or intent of any purposes of any programmings being offered? What is, and finally, to you as trustees, what is the expense, what's the cost? And what is our obligation for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-seven and beyond in new programming and new costs? Um and I really would like you to examine that and ask the important questions about this master agreement. Because it really is just a generic agreement and it doesn't say exactly what the two parties are gonna do. In terms of what programs are gonna offer to the community, to the city or to library district patrons, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Dinoff, staying here, but we're gonna let Mr. Rohr to go first for non-agenda items.
Good evening, a couple of thoughts between this twenty twenty-seven budget preview and the last month's sale of library, as I beat my usual dead horse. In the twenty twenty-seven budget projection, you're saying we're expecting materials costs to go to remain flat, spending to remain flat. Unless, you know, inflation stops for some reason, that's a net reduction in real materials purchased for this library. It is a cut to services, salaries projected to be up by three percent. I'm all in favor of cost of living increases. I was very concerned when I heard members of this board in the past imply that there might not be some coming, I'm glad to see I'm here. I am, I am still concerned that uh there doesn't seem to be quite enough staff, we heard at the last meeting, I believe, that. Uh more also, at least in part, because staff are feeling stressed, it doesn't seem we have a route to fix that. This receives in your email and your letter to Mayor Dan Borgermeyer, you said this library was near a tipping point. I don't agree with that, I thi- I think that tipping point happened years ago when we stopped giving our employees regular raises. Everything since then, it's felt like a managed tumble. We should have a, we should have a way to build this library back better. We need to get that tax proposal or some other mechanism to get a sustainable finance uh for this library. And the people deserve a say in that, we've not been offered a vote to uh adjust this library's income. For many, many years, I was thirteen when we last passed the the rate increase. Haven't had a chance since, I don't know if I'm gonna be alive long enough at this rate to see another one, so I I appreciate it. That's all I got, thanks.
You didn't participate when you were thirteen in that rate increase, did you?
I don't believe so.
All right, Mr. Dinoff, non-agenda items.
Thank you again, trustees, a couple of issues that I'd like to go over, um fortunately, the district has suffered some vandalism. Uh a deer run library, somebody decided in their wisdom, number of in, a few individuals. One main culprit that I feel has been identified by police detectives. But there was vandalism that was done uh on the trash enclosure. And not only there, but they also went down to I seventy to the bridge that just was completed last year. And created a multimillion dollar project, did some really bad damage to the bridge, which I just got off with MoDOT this afternoon. And so I'm asking for full cooperation of the district administration and our security manager for prosecution and restitution. This individual's license plate has been identified by police detectives, uh contacted the individual, he still has not turned himself in. Even though he said he was last week, uh there is a warrant out for his arrest and I would ask that the district make sure. That he pays back each and every dime that's owed to the district and I'm gonna also make sure that he pays back to MoDOT. For the bridge uh damage that he's done to the I seventy bridge at Main Street in downtown O'Fallon. The next issue is overnight parking, uh I I sent to the district director pictures of somebody who had a pickup truck for sale. And no license plates and it kinda brought up a lot of red flags for me, um there was a lot of overnight usage and people were using the internet. I just found out tonight that you turn off the internet a half an hour, an hour after the libraries are closed. So I wanna ensure or make sure that we're ensuring that our parking policy is being fulfilled. And that uh law enforcement is enforcing no parking or congregating on these parking lots. Some drug issues are happening at some of our branches that I've seen, some prostitution, illicit sexual encounters. Those type of things I've seen in the past and notify law enforcement. Staff changes, it's my understanding that there's a branch uh manage- management reassignment that is going to affect this week or next week. And I would ask the district be transparent and announce with the public, the district patrons. Be open with the public about who's gonna be in charge of what branch and who's gonna be in charge of the certain regional libraries. I think it's probably a good idea to mix it up and get new people, new ideas, new things in different neighborhood branches across the district. And finally, I would like to talk about the update on the plant watering contract versus the employee care of these plants. Uh what was the cost, what's the terms, what's the status? Uh Executive Director Grefschu, you said you would get back in touch with me about that contract, I didn't hear from you. But I'd like to just make it matter a public record and get it into the meeting minutes, that I think we, that's one expense that we can cut out. And we'll get our employees care and water the plants instead of paying for that uh commodity, which is really for country club folk. And uh I just don't think that we should be expending that type of money and there's some other issues and other cost measure savings that I can come up with. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Dinoff, that concludes public comments, next we'll enter into reports and correspondence, the chief financial officer's report. Any highlights, things you'd like to point out?
We're pretty much, uh we're slightly under budget, so that's a positive, we finished the quarter. The thing that we exceed budget on truly is the healthcare costs, we're at a hundred and eighteen percent, besides that, we're on budget. And capital's a little behind budget, but we've got planning going on as far as uh those pretty little items.
Could you please just speak up a little bit, sorry?
Could you please just speak up a little bit? Sorry.
Any questions from the numbers, trustees? Seeing that, we'll move on to the executive team report.
So I just have a few items to highlight on the executive team report, and the first is the I'm going to say it the way I know to say it, RICA, heard at RECA. Um, town hall, we had more than three-hundred-and-fifty um neighbors show up to learn more about how the library can help and more about the act itself. And we were um pleased to see our new library branch operations administrator serve on the panel to help explain what we can offer as a library. And we're making one-on-one appointments to help um anyone who needs help with RICA, so that's going well. Also, I would be remiss if I did not highlight all the staff and how they helped with the Missouri Library Association Conference we just had. I should start with Becca Splain, who was one of the conference co-coordinators. She did a fantastic job. She represented us so well. And not only did she do that and had three-hundred-and-twenty attendees from all over the state. Um, she also went ahead and did uh one of the workshops with Daniel Hevy, another one of our employees who works in the passport program. And they taught many other staff from other libraries how to start a passport program. And we also had Taylor Bansey and Kenny Maine, who are our library employees, that did a workshop on homeschool programming. So we were well represented there at the conference as well. I saw many people. John was there as well, so it was a good attendance.
Where was that located?
The, was, the um conference?
Yeah.
The conference was in Chesterfield
Oh, okay.
at one of the hotels there, and for the life of me, I cannot think of the name of it, but.
All right, perfect. It's, it was local.
It was local.
Yeah, okay. Does it move around every year?
Mm-hmm. It does. And the other thing I really wanna highlight is the Imagine Gala that the foundation put on. We, they had over two-hundred people come to the event. It was a wonderful event. Um, I, I would be remiss if I didn't give any type of recognition to Jennifer Linden, who is the director of the foundation, and she's done a remarkable job with her team as well as the foundation volunteers and the foundation board, as well as all the staff that volunteered their time for this event. It was, it was a really well-run event, and I heard compliments throughout the event, so it was great. And they uh raised over a hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars. So if you didn't get a chance to go this year, you're gonna have to go yes next year because everyone needs to experience it. It's a lot of fun. And then just to highlight on the next page, a few of the upcoming events. Uh, November eighth, we have a local author showcase at Spencer Road. November eleventh, don't forget, we're closed for Veterans Day. And then November nineteenth, uh, we're gonna have the ribbon cutting at Catherine Lindeman for the new early literacy space. We hope to see everybody there for that as well. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Oh, I'm gonna make you read the.
Oh, no. Oh, mm, why don't you read it, John? It's such a, such a good one. Okay. So um, the mission impact story is, I have been coming to this library, the Midendorf Cradell, for over fifteen years, and I absolutely love it. It is always clean and the staff is amazingly helpful and kind. They always have a wide selection of books. I also really like that I can use my library card to digitally check out books. Not to mention, they have all kinds of other things to check out: cake pans, video games, movies, and more. There really is something for everybody. I love that there is even a kids and teens section, a safe, free place that is good for all ages and all people.
And don't recall, Midendorf Cradell is the branch that was renovated and is open. Jennifer, can you stand up and at least be recognized as our branch manager of Midendorf Cradell? I start working hard more to work the mob city. Um, also, as part of this group work, I wanted to recognize, Diana, could you uh stand up as well? So we recently have hired our branch operation administrator. And can you snapshot of your history?
Snapshot? Thirty.
Thirty years with the district.
I grew up in the library. I started at Kisker Road as a page, and then I went to Mizzou for my first two years, came back, was a library assistant, was a paraprofessional, was a librarian, somewhere in there. I also worked at technical services for a couple of months. And library and branch manager at corporate, branch manager at Kisker Road, and I never knew I wanted to go this high, so here I am.
I think at one point you said that when you were younger, that you saw the branch manager at Kisker Road and you said.
I did. Martha Radinsky was my branch manager at Kisker Road, and I told her, I'm gonna have your job someday. And I did. So, but I, she's part of my Kiwanis Club, so I see her all the time, and it's, it's great.
Diana is, we're fortunate to have her in this new role. Um, a big piece of that role will be coordinating with our other branch managers, um both scheduling and training and professional development for our team. Uh, those are some of the things that we're really strong with our passion. She'll be working closely with Tiffany on rolling out some of our, uh, uh, training that we have both our frontline staff and during onboarding, but also for managers as well. Um, so we are looking for exciting, I think it's an exciting opportunity. Look forward to the energy that she brings to the organization and this new role.
What time will this look in?
The other thing I wanted to kinda highlight upon, um, since our last meeting, we did have a challenge store staff for a new September with library cards, I don't know much. So traditionally, we'd get, you know, seven less than a thousand cards. And so our marketing team came up, what, well, why don't we teach this challenger staff to get a thousand? And then they kinda like, what should we do? Just kinda make fun. So they came up with this idea of pie in, pie in the face to me. So I was like, yeah, sure, whatever. Follow the cards in a month. That's a lot of cards, new cardholders. You know, and that card is really our, it's that, that ticket. You know, it's the first thing you need to be able to check out resources, to be able to use one of our rooms, to really explore that, all the great things that lie before us. You gotta have a card. Um, so a thousand cards, like, yeah, that's a lot. They're gonna have to work for that. Well, they blew by it. One thousand four, one thousand five-hundred-and-forty-nine, forty-eight?
Somewhere in there.
Somewhere in there, cards. And uh, so one of our staff members, they did a, a drawing, and Erin from the Kisker Branch got the honors of putting a pie in my, pie in my face, and she did a great job. But she rubbed it in really good.
Let's see the pictures.
And you think that would be, you know, just whipped cream. Now, that's what they normally do, little filling.
Right, right.
It was blueberry. And it just, you know, slid right over my shiny bald head, right down the back of my shirt and between the shirt and the skin, so I sat back in my car. It was like, ooh, juicy. Erin is something that we had a lot of fun. Kisker staff enjoyed it. I think the team overall did, and it was a very good time. The other thing we're kinda doing is something that we called, and then we've kinda rolled out this much, it's called Book It With The Boss. Um, Rob is the one that named it, and it's kinda, I'm starting to get the, starting to like it a little bit.
I'm under one on you.
But it's kind of a, an opportunity really to, to get me out in the branch in a different way from just visiting staff on a one of the staff meetings, but working with them on things. And so I had the opportunity to go to the McClay Branch. And I showed up there one morning, and yeah, they showed me how to pick. We have, you know, people that have books, and they wanna have that book picked for them and put into the pole hopper so they can come pick it up later. So it's kinda like a personal shopper. And they had two-hundred-and-fifty bucks that had been picked that day. And I, I had about an hour I could give them that day. Um, and they got to see how slow the boss is, and how full my eyesight is, and how much I could sing the alphabet, both, you know, forward and backwards, and still not know what I was at. But I got it done. I got fifty bucks done in that hour. I didn't think that was too horrible, but I, I think it was, it was pretty bad. Um, but the, you know, it was just really amazing when you work with our teams out there. We had some very dedicated folks. Had the joy of going then to Kisker Branch, and it was right after Columbus, and uh we were all foreclosed that day, just like we're gonna be at Veterans Day. And the hold, or not the return locker, the books were just overflowing. So I had the fun of working with some of the staff and checking in books. Going through the process of how they review a book to make sure that, you know, if there's something that's been spilt on it, if the book's grubby, how do we look at it? If it's been damaged, here's what we do to it. If it's a book that's been on reserve and needs to be moved to or transferred to another branch, here's what we do, and kinda going through that process with the team. And really kinda just kind of learning that experience, but also kinda that interaction. Then later on this month, or just recently, I had the opportunity to go down to the Augusta Branch and um met one of our LA twos that worked with uh some of the community there, and I thought they were, it's a bunch of roomful. There was a program that they were doing. I learned the difference between crochet and knitting. And no, there was a difference. I, I now do, needle versus one. Um, what was interesting about this is that, you know, it looked like a roomful of old ladies. I'm sure they were all about my age, but, but, you know, the perspective changed on. And I thought, oh, that is this great. This is really folks from Augusta that have come down and found this program as a way that they can socialize, connect. They were learning something. There was reference to our materials that we had on the shelves on quilting and our crocheting and kn- knitting magazines. But as they got talking to them, these were folks that were from all throughout the county that came and drove to Augusta to be part of this program because they enjoyed um that employee so much. They actually have followed that employee kind of around the district at times and want to go to her programs because they enjoy them so frequently. Driving twenty minutes to do this one-hour program. Amazing staff that we have. I had the opportunity to go to Boom Trail and uh, and worked in there a little bit, and the same thing is just time after time, we hear these great mission stories that really make us reflect upon what we do. To Cliffview, they were doing a trunk or treat. So there's our manager, Cliffview, um Brian Smith, and one of its workers. And he now candy, and library swag to over fifteen-hundred families because it's part of the Chamber of Commerce event they were doing. So this idea of book it with the boss that Robin kind of is working with the staff do is really kinda helping me to kind of better appreciation of the day-to-day pass that our, our staff do, and the dedication that they have to the district and more for our patients. I wanted to share that with you, and every once in a while, I'll try to add that on here, just a couple of those stories so that you two can share in that joy that we, we have, like, so.
Thank you.
What's that?
We'll move on to the statistical report.
Statistical report. Our new and approved format. Thank you. Brianna?
I think the highlights from that is if you look at our physical checkout goal, uh, we've set a goal of four-million-two-hundred-thousand physical items. This is essentially one quarter of data, so, you know, we got July, August, September, so this is a full quarter, so we should be at twenty-five percent. Or twenty-seven percent, so we're slightly above. If you look at digital, although we know that's a growing part of our market share, we did set the goal at one-point-eight. We're at twenty-four-point-eight-nine, so right about twenty-five percent. So what, that implication hopefully is towards that we're pretty much on budget with our digital, you know, so we had this concern that digital gone really hurt us financially. I don't, we're, we're in a good place there. Overall, checkouts, we're slightly ahead of where we, we thought we should be. Active card holders, we set a goal of a hundred-and-seventeen. We're at ninety-six percent of that goal, so we have still nine months to, to increase our active card holders. Gate count is slightly ahead. Our site fees are ahead, and social media followers is out of, off the charts, but I could try to explain that to you, but I'm not, because I, I would get it wrong. If you like a program's held, once again, we're slightly ahead. We're at twenty-six percent, and the program attendance, which I think is actually more exciting, is actually thirty percent. So we're showing that other programs held, that most of them, if you look at the numbers, we have a goal of five-thousand programs, attendance of a hundred-thousand. That's twenty, so our goal is, you know, around twenty attendance per program. So we're running overall slightly above that twenty per program, so that's a good investment that we're seeing. If you go back to the, kinda the first page that shows this bottom chart on all checkouts, I will hit upon one other little piece of that. The light pink is the e-media, so that is our, you know, our hoopla and the e-media. And it's twenty-eight percent of our overall checkouts. And that is a large number, and it is slightly below, you know, that twenty-five percent, so we have anticipated that that's about where it would be. But I think if you look at the cost and we look at the cost of e-media, is, you know, it is high, and then our cost per book and all that is high. But the part of our goal is making sure that our patrons have access to materials that they want. And if you look at our two biggest branches, MK and Spencer, they're at, what's that, twenty-six percent? So e-media is equivalent about to those branches. And if you ask me, what does it cost to operate our two largest branches in this district and staff it? It's a big number. If it's as much as what we spend on e-media, eh, at least probably, we spend more. So even though e-media is expensive, and there's, we don't get the programming, we don't get rooms, you know, we don't get all the other things. And it's, once you use it, it's gone, you know, all the negatives. But from a dollar-for-dollar value, it's not horrible. I just wanna make sure that we kinda have that perspective that we are providing that service, and a part of our core mission is connecting our patrons to materials. And it is a format that's getting heavily used. As long as we plan for it, we can afford to be in all of that service. So, that's the score report.
Any questions related to the? None. We'll move on to correspondence. We've got letters from the city of St. Charles and the responses submitted, as well as a letter from the city of St. Peters. Any thoughts related to those? Any questions, discussion? Move on to the consistent agenda. We have minutes to approve. Eight minutes from September thirtieth, work session, public hearing, and regular meeting. Are there any modifications to be made? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve.
I'm so moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Sure.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? There are none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. The minutes have been approved. Moving on to the formal agenda, we have no unfinished business. New business is twenty-six dash eleven. Resolution authorizing the execution of the agreement between St. Charles City County Library District and Medica for employee health insurance for calendar year two, twenty-twenty-six. Any questions, thoughts? Um, the only thing that I will add is that, you know, you just uh talked about how great our employees are. Um, how they are the face of our district when individuals come into our um branches and um you know, I think we've made it a priority as a board to say, hey, you know, we've, we recognize there was a um, a gap in, in pay, and we went through the process of getting that paid plan approved. I would um, um, I would just like to, like for us to consider anything that we do with this med, uh, health insurance plan that we take into account the effect of that on our employees and limit that as much as possible. So. Any other information or discussion? I don't entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? There are none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. Resolution twenty-six zero-three is approved. On to resolution twenty-six zero-four. Resolution authorizing the execution of a master agreement between the city of St. Charles, Missouri and the city uh St. Charles City County Library District for community programs.
Is it okay if I provide you a little background on this?
Sure.
Okay, so the background on this master agreement is that um, we do, we have a go-kart field stops at city facilities, and stop at the um, tire register, building they have on my comradade. We also other programs with city parks and within, within city government itself. And um, we weren't being as due de, I guess, as diligent sometimes in making sure that we had a formal agreement between the two of us, because there's no law. They were just agreeing to allow us to stop there. But in all reality, there are impacts associated with insurance and other things that come into play. And so we, as, one of the things that I did come in here was making sure that we have an agreement between two political subdivisions by state statute were required to handle the whole internal. And that wasn't necessarily being done in all cases. And it takes time, because it comes back that your board is gonna go through the city council twice for two readings. And so the thought within the city, and, and Robin worked a lot on this, was working with city staff, was coming up with this idea of having a master agreement that lays out the basic terms. And then it also gives the flexibility for these types of agreements to be executed by, by me as administrative and, and their and whoever on their side, whether it be their city administrator administratively, so we don't have to bring each one of these back. And then necessarily, whether far, there's no cost agreements, and for most part, there may be, I can't even think of any of them that have a cost for them, that are, they're very minoristic. More like permitting fees than they are really contractual arrangements. Um, this will probably be a format that we'll use them with the other cities that we're working with as well, as well as St. Charles County, just so we don't have to bring each one of these through, but we, yeah, we do have a document showing that we are two independent political subdivisions. And here's, you know, what we're agreeing to, and, and then the insurance and other terms that we, we just have standard.
Can I add that it was St. Charles City that requested we do it this way?
Of course it is. All right. Thank you for that background information. Any further discussion? Now I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution 2604.
So moved.
Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. Resolution 2604 has been approved. Uh, we'll now move into closed, uh, session. We, there is a, uh, a need to have closed session pursuant to state statute, RSMO 610.0213 personnel and 13 individually identifiable personnel records. Is there a motion to move into closed session?
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Trustee Zucker?
Aye.
Trustee Harden?
Aye.
Trustee Gartner?
Aye.
Trustee Collier?
Aye.
Trustee Seads?
Aye.
Trustee Hankey?
Aye.
Trustee Hazelwood?
Aye.